With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any public discussion going once, going twice, sold, no bidders? All right, first up is approving the agenda in minutes. Is there a motion on that? Is there a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Uh, we got a handwritten claim, uh, Tammy?
Um, so this claim isn't necessarily a new claim, so if I understand it correctly, we issued um, a check to the wrong vendor or to the wrong place, so this is just correcting um, where it's been issued to.
So that one was voided out and canceled and this is replacing it?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion on the claim? Okay, I'll cycle. Jack seconds. Any discussion questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. And we've got um, safety committee minutes and... Is Donna coming over for anything?
No, um, I don't think she had anything additional other than what's in your packets.
Okay. Well, acknowledge those and wellness, um, update from the library. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
It's, you know, of you again. Um, thank you for inviting us. This is the end of the first quarter of our fiscal year, so I wanted to just give you a snapshot of where we're at. Um, before I begin, I'd like to, on behalf of the Cassuth County Library Association, thank you for passing the budget amendment last week which restored library funding. Um, so these are just some of the stats that we collect and these numbers are taken from July, August, and to the point where we're at in September. So we've had over ten thousand people through the door. Uh, we have added one hundred nine new borrowers. Ten of those people are rural. And nine thousand five hundred sixty-six items were checked out. You can see the number of rural people. Um, those are checkouts that take place at the library, but we also have online checkouts for books, magazines. Um, so that's the two thousand five hundred sixty-one items. We have twelve public computers and during the summer, many of those computers were always being used. Um, you can see that we had one thousand twenty-two sessions each checkout. And I'm not sure if you're aware, but we do offer home delivery. So nineteen people received home delivery during this quarter. Um, ten people called in and said, could you please bring my books out? I can't go into the library. And then we also go to local care centers and so fifty people were able to check out books over this three-month time period. Um, as you know, we had summer reading that took place during these three months. We had five hundred sixty-nine people registered and we had different levels of completion. Um, forty-one percent of those people completed all levels with sixty-three programs that we offered during summer reading. Yeah, you can see the attendance was quite high. I put a few pictures in to show you some of the activities. And then I was wondering, a little bit of a news item, were you aware that we also have a seed library? And that's been going on for a number of years. Um, we have the Iowa State Agricultural... I can't read it, but you can probably see that.
Department of Ag and Land.
Thank you. And um, we get our seeds from different companies. They donate them. We may have to pay for shipping. Uh, but those seeds are left out on the table and then people can come in and check out the packets. And we have had garden beds in the past, but we pulled those out. We're redoing them. And in the top right-hand corner, you can see a picture of the way that we intend our space to look. Um, we are working with the Chips Off the Old Block group. You can see the planning committee. And then they came in on the other pages uh, to do, to build us one demo garden to make sure it was what we wanted, what they wanted, that it all worked. And you can see in the hand. That's the completed project. They're going to build the rest of those over the winter and then we'll place them outside next spring, start growing crops. It's a great opportunity for educational programs. It's a great opportunity to work with other organizations in the community. And then the crops that we raise, we put out on the counter and people are able to take those. Maybe try something different they haven't had before. And then I also wanted to include just a few of the programs that we're offering in October. Um, we have many more, but these are four of the ones that you'll find. So, do you have any questions for me? And I see Lisa's here too.
Do you want to talk about the book club that you did that some county employees were involved in? Um, that started earlier this summer?
The who was involved?
Some of the county employees were involved in some of the healthy um, book club.
Well, so that's not my book club. Um, but this is one that has really taken off and if you look in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see that the book um, is offered. It all is very health-related and then there are activities. Um, there are supplemental materials that are given out and they do a lot of tasting, testing. Um, it's been quite an interesting and popular book club. So I didn't know there were county people involved in it.
Yes, yeah, we had several county employees that were involved in that. So, yeah.
Great, great. Any other questions?
Where do you have the raised beds at or is it out back?
North side.
Okay.
North side.
Very good. I didn't realize you did home delivery in that too, so that's a great service.
And I think the other libraries in the county will do that also. So, we reach a lot of people that way that normally couldn't get into the facility. Anything else?
Thanks for, thanks for them all. Thanks for coming in. All right, um, next up is urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
So um, this is a report that happens every year that we're required to submit um, prior to December first. This is one of the tip reports that we're required to do. Basically, this tells us um, what happened last year with our urban renewal funds. Um, how much we brought in and how much we paid to the city of Taitanka and Gold Eagle and then Cassuth County. Um, pretty self-explanatory if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions on that report? Obviously, yeah, there's several pages in the packet for it, so.
I did include um, the information that where the numbers came from, so you could see the reports of...
The fund status report and some of that stuff.
Correct.
Cash balance report, yep. All right, we will... Do we need a motion to approve that report?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that report? Five, I'll second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Any amiss? Is there a for this?
Yes.
Morning. All right, so we are up to the copy machine replacement agenda item.
What's that?
We are up to the copy machine.
So uh, every year we go through a list of copy machines that we have in the county and try and make sure we have new enough equipment that we're working and um, uh, so we did that again this year. And we've got three machines that have over four hundred thousand pages on them. One of those happens to be the GIS copy machine used by the assessor's office, auditor and GIS, all three of those departments. And that machine is ten years old now and so we're on the edge of not being able to find parts is what we're, we're running into at this point. So, we're looking to replace that. Replacement cost is seventy-five hundred dollars. It does reduce our costs, our annual costs, some, but the break even takes a while. And um, I'd like to move forward with that. The assessor's office is also on board and they're willing to ship in fifteen hundred from their budget. So that helps reduce um, the cost of all of that, so. Um, Tammy, Luke and I have had some discussions on it and uh, they're on board for replacing it as well, so.
Because it's ten years old, it's very slow. Um, so we, we could use something that's quite a bit faster. Most of the other machines are quite a bit faster, so. We are definitely in favor of updating.
Okay.
What brand are you?
PiaSera is the new brand that Officer Solomons works with, so. And we did do a, a test of that machine. That was the black one that was in our office for a while, so. Very fast and was reliable. Color and prints were good, so we're pretty good with it, so.
All right, any questions from the board? If not, entertain a motion to replace that machine.
One more.
Okay, do we have a second?
One second.
All right, any discussion?
We can do the old one. Do they, is there any value to them or?
We'll put on a go deal. It was the last one sold for fifty dollars or something, so it will uh, it'll be up for public auction and um...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Any amiss? Solutions.
So um, Josh and I have had some discussions on this and see it's very familiar with uh, Solutions as a company. About four years ago, Solutions got bought out by a company called Harris, local government. And we knew going into that, that we were gonna run into some issues with support, with staffing. Harris is a national company. They own seven different operations. Solutions happens to be one of those. And the solution software runs the entire courthouse, so it runs auditor, assessor, treasurer. The engineer has some um, equipment in there. And so it's our primary day-to-day. Without it, we can't operate. And so we are a hundred percent reliant on that software and that hardware and that company to provide service and support. And what's happened is that all of the brains and all the competent folks have left, um, resigned, moved on, which we, again, knew would be coming. Um, and it's finally coming to fruition now where they're unable to support us at this point. And so what we're running into is we're having outages that we, in the past, would have taken fifteen minutes to fix and we're talking a couple days. Um, one of the issues we ran into, they had to have five people on the phone to resolve the issue, which previously the employee would have fixed it literally in fifteen minutes. Um, I had an issue with printing the other day and all the printing was down for the whole courthouse. Normally um, the person, the administrator could have gotten in there and fixed it in about a half hour. Um, after messing around with staff that didn't know what they were doing for about half a day, um, we decided to get in contact with a former administrator and he was able to jump in on this and fix that almost instantly. He, along with three other people, former employees from Solutions, have gotten on board with a new company called RenewGov. And they are offering support plans for Solutions customers. They're not able to do programming for the solution software, but they are, are able to provide support and give direction to us to give direction to Solutions to fix their own equipment. It's not ideal, but at least they have people that are competent and trained to do this work. Um, the problem is, instead of working on time and material like some companies will do, they are only offering one plan. It is a fixed rate plan for the year, unlimited amount of support hours, and it's fifteen thousand dollars. I truly believe we don't have an option and that we are forced to, to do this. Um, I didn't bring in any other department heads to discuss it, but um, you know, Karen the other day was unable to um, have mortgages closed because they were unable to operate for two days. This would have reduced that amount of time, maybe not to fifteen minutes, but definitely not to the two and a half days that it took for the, this other staff to, to operate. On top of that, the national leadership for Harris Solutions, um, in conversations with them, has focused on that counties don't have competent employees and are not doing their job correctly. And so they're having to support and hold hands of county employees to be able to do their jobs. Solutions did that without any complaints in the past and so all the counties are used to that. And so that's a definite change between what their expectation at Harris is versus what the county expectation is, so. Um, I don't think it's gonna get better. Um, I'll be surprised if they don't try and force us over to a different version of software that they have. So, you know, we looked at going with another company called Tyler, but that cost was triple. We've kind of talked about that already. Um, with ISAC, they are looking at trying to bring someone in to do software for Iowa, but that's a three-year process and millions of dollars of investment to make that happen, so that's not an overnight fix. So again, I'm looking for um, board approval to um, sign that contract or give the chair approval to sign that contract. And again, at this point, I don't think we have a choice but to move forward with that, so. Um, it's unfortunate, but uh...
So if Solutions doesn't have anybody that, I thought, I mean, we're buying this from Solutions and they don't have any, any tax support at all?
They have some tax support, but the competency and the um, longevity of their employees is about zero. And the issue with Lisa, literally, they had five employees on the phone and trying to figure out something that would have taken around fifteen minutes.
They're all new. They're all in training. They're all new. I do disagree with um, Derek and the fact that we don't have an option. I think we need to give Solutions a little bit more time to train those employees. Um, the turnover has just been in the last several months. Um, and I'm hoping, um, you know, Derek's probably right. It might not get any better, but I'm hoping it does. Fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money um, for a year contract. Um, and we have gotten emails from Solutions um, advising us not to get support from outside agencies. So, I, I don't, I'm worried about that as well, so.
Well, it's like having a, having a Samsung phone and having to go to Apple support.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, right.
You know, something like this, they can't figure it out, but this, this is the first time.
Well, we had the thing with, we had the thing with Lisa, we had the thing with Karen the other day and we had the printing issue a few weeks ago. Long as every two or three weeks, I suppose.
We do have a major issue right now, but it's a programming issue, so even this group wouldn't be able to help us. It's programming and it's holding up our audit, so.
What, what we ran into with the printing issue is that the former administrator was able to give direction to the programmer that still worked there that wasn't up to speed to be able to fix it. So he couldn't get in and make the programming change. I wouldn't let him do that, but he was able to give direction to that current employee to say, hey, here's what you need to fix, so.
They were giving direction to the Solutions employee?
Correct, correct.
Is Solutions on board with that?
No, they absolutely are not.
Why, why is it, why is it should this be on the back of Solutions to?
A hundred percent.
Call somebody instead of why should we have to pay?
I agree completely.
I think Solutions should be the ones that have to call those people and say, can you help us?
Yeah, I completely agree with their not willing to do that.
That's a, that's a lot of money for, I think Solutions should pay those people to work with that instead of us having it.
And I've asked that for bringing in a resource and subcontract that and that is going nowhere.
It's up, I think it's on their back.
Is there, is there terms in the agreement we have with them that they're supposed to provide these services?
There is.
Mm-hmm.
Have you had Todd look at the contract at all?
I...
So that was kind of part of the discussion that um, Derek and I had had is, is the Solutions is under contract to support this and um, there's that possibility that they are in breach of contract for not being able to give us the support that we've required. Um, so there has been some discussion in, in that way of, of maybe they need to help cover that bill.
I think we need to find that information out before we go and spend fifteen thousand on extra support.
I completely agree with you guys. However, if we have an issue today, we're gonna have an outage where we're gonna be down for three, four days and will not be able to transact business, so um, we've already been running at that point for several months and so I, I think this is our option. And so if you want to wait until we do have a major outage and then make a decision on it, we can certainly do that, however, that would not be my recommendation, so.
It's not too efficient to have people in the courthouse not being able to do their job for three days either. That's...
Hundred percent.
That's gonna make fifteen thousand more fragile, reasonable.
I completely agree.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I also think we need to... If we do move forward with engaging other help, I do think we need to follow up on the terms of that agreement and go after them for the additional.
You should go to talk to Solutions and say, listen, you're breaching your contract.
I don't disagree with that at all.
The avenue we should take is have Todd contact, send a letter to Solutions. And demanding that they, they uh, follow the contract.
So in the meantime, this outside company is not willing to do any more support for us. Um, they've already done a few things that have no cost. So how do you want me to proceed on that front? Do you want us to run without that support? Um, again, it's, it's pretty minor if people aren't able to close on their home loans, if no one's able to print. Um, it is fifteen thousand. We could sure talk to the company attorney as well, but in the meantime, I, I strongly encourage you to, to do something on this.
We need to get our work done.
Timely. I... So I, I don't think you have a choice in short term.
Well, what if we did something where...
We did also have an issue um, with uh, on our website. Tax statements were posted. The issue was found last August. Um, Solutions was unable to fix it until um, I was made aware of it about two months ago. And even then, the programmer took three or four weeks to get through that process. And when they did their program change to fix the tax statements, that's when they crashed the um, server and made the printing unavailable, so. Yeah, I, I don't have more to tell you on that.
What if we had something to authorize a chair, chair and vice chair to make that decision on moving forward with support? If something else happens so that we're not waiting for a full board meeting or something? I mean, I don't, I don't really want to be down with a major issue, yes. Well, it, it would be a vote here now as a full board, but it could be postponed a little bit. Um... I don't know.
The problem is, is when you go to a situation like that, they, you know, you have to immediately, you know, say, okay, we're gonna agree with this and not have a chance to look at what the agreement is.
We already have a agreement.
No, I'm saying the new, the new company.
Well, that process takes time too, so if you say, hey, we have an issue on Thursday morning, hey, we'll sign this contract now, that's gonna take a couple days to go through the process and get the signatures, assuming that their financial person is in the office.
Do you have a copy of that agreement now?
I, I do. Um, I haven't dug deeply into it, but um, I guess the whole point is right now, we're, we're running kind of without what I would consider um, essential support on our products, so. And I do know it's a lot of money and we should go after Solutions, but in the meantime, um, if we're not able to do some work, that's an issue.
Are there other counties going with them already?
Yes, there are several counties in the process of going this route. I don't know where they're at in their process. Um, we did meet with, um, there was about twenty of us on the phone the other day, um, last week, talking with ISAC about what their direction is, what the, this company's direction is and coming up with something, so. We're not the only one with this issue. It's, it's every county has Solutions.
Not sixty percent of the state?
Yeah, it's a chunk of customers. And their sheriff's going down. Every, a lot of other counties are going to Tyler because they have staff.
Instead of waiting for the next issue, just to, yeah, have, engage Todd or, or whoever we need to have, reach out to them and set parameters as far as if you're not cert, providing the service that we've agreed to, then if something would happen, then you guys are responsible for the certain reason at the time.
The Solutions would have to pay that bill and if they can't fix it, they should pay it.
I don't disagree with that. So what's my direction today is what I'm asking from you guys?
I'll uh, I'll make a motion that we move forward with um, getting support from this new company and uh, direct Derek to work with Todd to come through the um, current contract and see if their, if Solutions is financially responsible.
Okay, let's give Tammy a second to write here. And when you have that written down, can you repeat it so Josh can confirm if that's his motion? Murphy, one second.
Does the new company have a name?
Uh, RenewGov is the, and they, they've been in business for a while. They have, I think they have the entire state of Oklahoma for tax, um, tax software, so um, this is a new venture for them. Just bringing out the former Solutions employees as a part.
Okay. Do we need a second before I read?
Just read the motion and then we'll make sure everyone understands what was, what was moved.
Okay, to move forward with getting support from a new company and direct Derek to work with Todd to comb through the current contract. I'm guessing that's Solutions' contract.
Yep.
Um, to see if Solutions is financially responsible.
Okay, is that, anything you want to change or add?
Maybe put review instead of comb. Yeah, review the current contract.
Is there a second to that motion? Roger. Okay. Is there any discussion?
Um, can I ask a question? With moving forward, does that mean agreeing to the fifteen thousand dollar gun? Do you want to change that or would that differently?
Probably should have direction for the chair to sign the agreement. But I mean, that would be how we typically have them listed, I suppose.
Okay.
If it's a one-year agreement, maybe you want to add in or something?
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt.
One year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
It could be appropriate to put that in.
You guys on board with adding direction for the chair to sign and the one-year agreement?
For fifteen thousand.
Okay, okay. Yeah, add that somewhere off to the side.
So if I put move forward with getting support from new company for one year and direct the chair to uh, sign agreements, sign contracts, sorry.
And we can get the company's name in there, but we can get that afterwards.
Renew, I got it.
Yep, yep. All right, any other discussion? I guess, yeah, I don't, I don't like the position we're in, but not being able to functionally do our jobs isn't probably something we should let go too long.
Yeah, I can guarantee you, if we go down for a couple of days and people come in and expect things to be done and they can't, we're gonna hear about it anyways, so.
Yeah, I...
I'd rather be on the
Well...
Forward ended it and, and deal with it now before.
Well, we've already dealt with it for a while.
Yeah.
It's just, it just hasn't shut the doors down yet. All right, any other discussion or final questions? Roll call vote, please.
Class?
No.
Jerks?
Yes.
Wackler?
Yes.
Math?
No.
Decker?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Thanks for the discussion, everyone. Um...
Sorry for bringing such a negative thing forward.
Happens. Um, next is recording budget workshops. Carter, you have this?
Yeah, I put this on. We had voted on this last year and due to a couple of concerns from department heads, um, I had previously voted not to record the budget workshops due to conversations that could be had. Um, and I just wanted to revisit this, especially after this past budget session. I think it's important for the public to be aware of those conversations. And having gone through the last... And having gone through the last one and a half, kind of two budget set times, there's really only one. One time that we had to. We would have needed to shut recording off, um and Kyle has his recording going anyway as well, but. I'd like to revisit the county recording budget workshops moving forward. So that's, and and with comments that are made. And the board playing blame game on who's said what, what we're doing and the public not being aware of what's going on. What decisions are made or what decisions shouldn't be made in a workshop, either way. I think it's important that we record it going forward and that's why I put it on. That's, that's why it's there.
Okay, any other discussion or comments from the board?
Yeah, it's been brought up, the um people have accused the, you know. Um department heads or, you know, their other departments just bringing their budget to us and then we just prove, you know, this. This would at least bring some light to public to be able to see that, you know, we do go through a budget process, we do discuss what's. You know, in these budgets um prior to approving them, so this would kind of help help bring that. To the public to have the conceit to that there's a, you know, sense of process in the workshops and stuff.
All right. Any other comments? Is there any motion?
I'll I'll make a motion to record budget workshops moving forward.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
And I will make the comment if, if, you know, as we go through it, if there's a. Of course, we'll be aware of anything sensitive that a department head needs to talk about, that's always an option to. To uh break during a specific time for a specific reason, but that's.
I I guess in response to that.
Which is what closed session is for, when you know, well, there's outline in the code too.
There would be, yeah, um personnel matters that could be discussed in closed session, yeah, performance stuff. I guess I would say, I think I said it before and I'll say it again with the. Primary responsibility of the board being the budget, I I do think this is an important piece for the public to be able to see. What's discussed and I I don't think that's a bad thing, I think there can still be good conversation. But at the same token, if there is a specific employee issue, it doesn't have to be conveyed to the board. In the boardroom, um one or two of us could talk to a department head three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Um it doesn't have to just be talked about during budget workshops. And I can't say that I've ever really seen that on a wide scale. In the time I've been on the board, so.
I don't agree with that, if there's an employee issue that needs to be bought before the entire board, not one or two. Board members being maddered and taking upon themselves, I think you're off base on it.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say one or two board members should address it.
You said one or two, we'll talk to department.
No, like, I could go talk to, I could go talk to Tammy at any point in time, I could talk to Nick or Karen or anyone else. They don't have to share the information with us all at the same time, if there's an action that needs to be taken, that would be a board action hypothetically. Whether it's changing a handbook policy or anything like that, but just giving information about a situation. Does not have to be.
But the recent department heads, including me, don't want recording in workshops, isn't because we have an employee issue. Or there's a problem with an employee, it's because we're giving you an update on what happened this past year and what may be happening this next year, including some responsibilities and employees that we have. Or things that they have to deal with, or maybe personal situations, it's not necessarily an issue, it's just personnel. How they, how they do their work, how it affects them, those things that we don't feel comfortable being recorded, so it's not employee issues. It's it's personnel and and how they work for the county.
I I don't think I've seen much of a focus on personnel or individual jobs in budget conversations to this point.
Most of us talk about raises and why our employees deserve raises and some of it is personnel. And that happens on a yearly basis.
It can't be because we, and we had the conversation when we changed the wage scale. That if they're in the same position, doing the same job description, they have to be paid the same, it's not.
But we got zero raises this last year, so nobody got anything.
That's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the structure of it, we, we're not picking and choosing, one person does a really good job. The other person doesn't do a really good job, so one gets a higher percentage than the other, that's not what we're talking.
No, and I'm not saying that either, I'm just saying when we come in with deputies. Other budget discussions, it involves individual people.
Deputies potentially could, but.
And again, Carter touched on that too, that we would still have the option to essentially shut down recordings if we need to have those types of conversations. Um but for the vast majority of the budget.
No, you can't shut, you make a decision, if you make a decision to record a workshop, if it's not a closed session, you have to record.
I said as outlined in the code, not, not just one.
Yeah, I.
Can't shut it off.
No, you get to a.
It's not.
You get to a very slippery slope to pick and choose when you're gonna turn things on and off, and I would never support that.
You're gonna do it or you have to do it. The only time is be in closed session.
Yeah.
So don't, don't be going down that.
The only, the only time I was willing to do it was when we were talking about a murder that happened here, I think that's an extreme situation. That's a little bit outside of a day to day operation, but um otherwise. It it gets to be a slippery slope if you start saying we're gonna record some and we'll maybe turn them on and off, that that doesn't work. Any other comments?
Call for question?
Okay, I will call for a roll call vote.
Just one second, please.
Yeah, go.
Class?
No.
Jerks?
No.
Wackter?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. All right, motion carried, uh Carter, can you call Doug?
Good morning Doug Carter, we are ready for you when you are. All right, thanks.
Do you want a lot more channel level, be ready when Doug's done here? It didn't look like he had anything for right away, so I wouldn't, wouldn't think it'll be too long. And I know we're not to it yet, but did you guys see the change order and pay app and stuff in the folder?
Good question, since it gets voted on as short as a party.
Uh just pass it down, you didn't vote.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah. Just the two. Is there any questions on the change order pay app? Or in a Doug?
Good morning Doug.
Good morning, everyone.
Do we have any construction in the right order?
There are no requests for construction in the road right away today.
Okay. Um discussion?
Uh last week, received a couple of different uh emails and some different news on funding. Uh one of them is that the Iowa County Engineers Association is ex. Is anticipating a notice of opportunity for some funding for grants. Uh for CHBP bundled bridge projects. And pursuit county does have four that would uh be eligible. And I just created a quick map there, uh Michelson Marsh, which is a bridge that. Uh we have been talking about using urban renewal funds to complete that construction. Another bridge right north of Sexton is a bridge that we were planning, we are planning to let in November. And use local funds to complete that construction. Uh from Michelson Marsh, uh Bridge seven eight one two zero one, right around the corner. We're planning to use federal funds, uh bridge replacement funds to replace that. And then there's a bridge up on the north side of Union Slough eighty-eight fourteen fifty. Uh this notice of opportunity, we would have to uh wr- write a grant, not we. The Iowa County Engineers Association would have to uh write a grant, uh there's not necessarily any. Guarantee that it is going to be uh approved and accepted. Uh this pursuit county had three bridges. Uh two thousand eighteen, two thousand seventeen that were constructed using the same funding and same grant. What I would like to do is continue to develop the Michelson Marsh Bridge using the urban renewal funding. And the bridge north of Sexton, go ahead, let that as we have planned, but. Uh include, have the Iowa County Engineers Association include the other two bridges. And I wanted to make the board aware of this, that uh. The, it does appear that the grant will be available, there'll be a notice coming up and. The county engineers will be uh putting an application together for that. If the board disagrees and would like to do something different, this would be an opportunity to speak about that.
I guess, is there anything um. As a significant concern you would see with trying to get all four of them included?
The bridge north of Sexton, it is in very poor shape, we would have to probably reduce the. Weight limit on that to something around five tons, which is going to make it. Embargo to a point that it'll be difficult to be used. Our, our consultant that inspects bridges. Uh two years ago was very concerned about that. And we, at that time, we thought we would have that let and constructed by this time. But uh what our plans and our development is going slower than what we anticipated. Michelson Marsh, uh very same thing, as we continue on with the life of that bridge. It's going to continue to uh be reduced in its capacity to carry loads. So. If. If the board would like, that that could be done, there's nothing that's going to say that. We're going, that our application will be accepted. We can certainly take, wait and see, but. These, these two structures, they do need to be replaced.
What kind, what kind of timeframe would we know anything from this?
We don't know, the notice of funding opportunity has not even been put out, we just know that they're gonna be putting one out. So we don't know when that is and what the timeframe is.
So potentially, we could move forward with what was already planned. And look at other options when that would come through or or not.
Right, uh. I I believe we, we've come to a point of with our development and our plans uh for those two structures. Um the other two structures, if the notice comes out, we can certainly, there'll be some cost sharing that goes along with it. Uh seventy thirty, I think is what it's seventy percent federal, thirty percent upon local, is what the last one was. And that's all part of the application process and proposal that uh county engineers would put together.
What's your dollar figure on estimates for these four, like in each individually?
Uh the two over Buffalo Creek, which is seventy-eight twelve ninety and seventy-eight twelve zero one. Are one point two million.
A piece.
Yes, and eighty-eight fourteen fifty, um we just have that as being a project. Uh in the wind, uh the possibility of bringing it with the wind tiff, I don't remember. That was six hundred fifty, seven hundred thousand and sixty-seven eighteen oh six is right in that. Six hundred fifty thousand, I believe, but again, that was a structure that was included on that. Possible investment financing funded. Uh no, those are all pretty good sized training changes. And they all are, what is, they have a a, a traffic volume that makes them qualify. And as well, they are in poor condition, so when the query was run across the state, these four did. Qualify.
So we're north of Sexton, then we do go, go the way here, we'd like to go, when would that be let, would that be?
No, we're planning, I think it was November twelve, let.
Are you trying to do that this, this year or?
No, that'd be for next year, next, next calendar year. Let November twelve and then uh let them start right with this.
Go another route, might be another year.
Could very well be, yes, may even be longer. May even be longer.
Couple million. I mean, that's a, that's a difference of two million versus four million that we would turn in roughly. If, if we sent them through this grant program, when would they, like the one by Sexton, when would that need to be embargoed?
Immediately.
Why isn't it now if it's in that?
Cause we told them we were gonna be reconstructing it.
Well, I guess the way the federal government's handing out money right now, I'd like to bring as much of it back home as we can. I don't know.
What are you looking for today then, as far as?
Well, what I plan to do, what, after giving it thought, my con- my recommendation would be to put those two bridges, eighty eight fourteen fifty and seventy eight twelve oh one, uh, towards the grant and continue our planning on seventy eight twelve ninety, which is Michelson Marsh Bridge. And seventy, sixty seven eighteen oh six, which is the bridge north of Sexton, get those things replaced.
You said the grant recovered via seventy thirty split?
There's gonna be, there's gotta be some sort of cost share. We don't know what it is at this time. Uh, but I believe the last time that was done, it was a seventy percent federal, thirty percent local, which actually was farm-to-market funds.
Is this a pop, is this a, a dollar figure? As far as what they're looking to put towards projects in the county that we'll receive? Or is it a certain projects that we have to submit and they will tell us yea or nay on them?
Pro- these are the projects that would qualify for the grant. It's not every county gets so many dollars.
Okay.
These are projects, uh, that meet A T, uh, the quality of the bridge.
Okay. So.
I mean, we can delay it. If, if you would like to delay those other two bridges, they are eligible, but there's nothing that says that they
No guarantee.
gonna qualify. There's nothing that's gonna guarantee anything.
Uh, so probably have with is if we, you know, we try to put those towards the grant, but they don't, you know, it doesn't come through, uh, it doesn't get approved or whatever reason, um, then we're back to constructing it. By the time we get back to discussing to construct it, the price has gone up and, and that bridge has gotten worse condition. So then we, then we're dealing with that. Um, I think that I agree with you, the two that we had, you know, that were gonna be, um, especially that one north of Sexton, if we're gonna be letting that one, I don't agree. I think we, we, uh, do that one that, that way and then save, um, those other two, like you were saying, to potentially put on that grant.
Okay. Is that the board's feelings?
Plans, I agree with that.
Okay. Well, that's how we will handle that.
Two. What do you think Roger?
Three more we have to.
I mean, I'm all for it, it govern, you know, federal dollars, but if we're gonna have to wait around for too long and it potentially not, you know, coming to fruition, that we end up having to foot that cost and that cost is, you know, that much higher when we go to do it, that's it's a gamble, but.
One of the rest of Sexton could be replaced. I agree with that. The other three, I, I, six and a half doesn't, I, I can either, I'll do it.
I guess, maybe that's another question. Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, if you put these in for the grant, they would look at the factors for each bridge and pick out of that pool that submitted, which ones get the funding, right? Like they?
No, they're all included in the grant application and, uh, the federal government would determine, the federal highway would determine whether the grant is approved or not.
Yeah, but, but they look at the criteria of the bridges each, right? Or is it, how is it judged?
The grant would be written in a way that it says, we are submitting bridges that meet, meet the qualification A, qualification B, qualification C. All of these bridges would be determined to meet all of those. I mean, we're talking about, I think about seventy bridges across the state of Iowa. And these four were part of that. Now, other counties, I don't know what other counties are gonna say. They might be discussing this the very same, very same thing. They've had some plans to get them replaced, uh, using a different funding, um, so.
What if we built the one by Sexton as planned and did the other three, turning them in? Is that what you were thinking Roger?
I was almost that too.
Cause I mean, like the TIF funds, they're not gonna go anywhere. We've got outstanding loans are ready for that. I mean, I think it is important to get that accomplished, but if we put that on hold for a little bit, I don't think we're moving, changing the world a whole lot.
We've been working on that bridge for eight years.
Well, we finally, the challenge of getting the road right of way on that was
Yeah.
was great. There's quite a few parties involved in that.
Yeah.
Along, not just the owner in Acusus County, but, uh, federal government and, uh, US Department of Agriculture.
Yeah.
So there were some challenges there.
I'd hate to do those two bridges at the same time. That would be a
We would not do that.
Do that, no, we can't.
We would, we've, we've done situations where we tied projects. For example, right north of, right south of Gerber Valley, uh, we had those two bridges tied the same contractor and they had to significantly complete one project before they started another. So we can still control those types of things Roger.
I guess I'd be supportive of that. I mean, even if we're including the three, that'd be almost, well, it'd be hypothetically a little over three million.
There's no guarantee you're gonna get them all. You might only get one bridge.
Right.
Uh.
Or is there a guarantee you're gonna get them or?
I, if, if the application is put together and the federal highway accepts the application, every bridge, my understanding, every bridge that we would have submitted would be included.
Okay.
It's, it's not a, it's a matter of that application going through and being accepted. You know, these bridges were, so. All right. Well, we'll include the northern three on this map then and move from there. Uh, also received a, uh, note and this is from, uh, Iowa Department of Natural Resources and, uh, is the subject of the letter was the ability for Topeka Shiner to, uh, to move along the Boone River, uh, channel. And there are, there's two locations in Cassup County where that Topeka Shiner is not able to, uh, move due to, well, there's one place where it's just not able to move at all. Uh, right along Old Eighteen, there is a culvert, a box culvert that's in place. And then there's a tile bulkhead on the inlet side of that. So there's probably about a three foot drop. So that's as far north as Topeka Shiner can get in the, and I think that's Prairie Creek. Uh, there's another location that there's a significant, what they consider a significant, uh, drop. And that's located on the north line of section thirty-two of Prairie. And there's a metal pipe there. Uh, it's by Elise Casey's, if you know where Elise lives. Uh, that happens to be, I'm not sure the exact size of it. It's a large corrugated metal pipe that was probably placed in the seventies. And there are funds available, National Culvert Removal, Replacement Restoration Grant Program. We did not have this, uh, bridge on the north side of section thirty-two of, of Prairie Township even programmed, but it would be an opportunity to, uh, to get that thing replaced. And I think it would be good to go ahead and, uh, submit a grant to see if we possibly could get that thing replaced as well. So I'm gonna plan on writing up a grant, try to get the, that bridge replaced. This is the type of thing, I think we have a lot of metal pipe out there, large metal pipe through drainage ditches that, uh, in the next few years, we're gonna have to address. So gonna try to get some funds there. And then the last funding news is that, uh, farm-to-market funds. Uh, there was a limit of spending ahead, three years, a limit of your farm-to-market funding. Uh, due to the health of the farm-to-market fund, they have decided to increase that borrowing ahead to four years. And with that decision, we are going to be able to resurface all of the roads we had planned on resurfacing, uh, next calendar year. So we will be resurfacing what I call the Irvington Road, B fifty-five from one sixty-nine over to the, uh, Laverne Sexton Road, P sixty. Uh, we'll be doing P thirty from Highway eighteen down to the E Road, which I think is B sixty-four and then, uh, there's a stretcher road, um, down to Laverne Township, I call it the Hannah Road, but we'll get all of those. We're, we're gonna submit plans, um, for all of those and we believe we'll be able to get it all funded. So that's some good news there.
Yeah, that's good.
Sounds good.
Uh, construction that we have going on right now down at, uh, the bridge on the west side of twenty-sixth of Prairie Township. Uh, they're driving the South Pier Piling. They drove some yesterday and they're driving the remainder today. Uh, the tile job up by Lone Rock, we did get everything figured out there, we believe anyway. And, uh, get it, got everything repaired and hooked up. Uh, and discovered why our found, why our road surface was, was continuing to, um, drop down.
What, what was the cause that was found?
There was tile that, uh, had holes in it that, um, material was being sucked out. Uh, north of Sway City Drainage District sixty, that project they're crossing. Reitzels are planning to cross, uh, one hundred seventy Avenue today. So they are progressing. There's a private drainage project near Bird, um, three hundred street. They're planning on, that is an approved crossing and they're planning to do that later this week. And then we have a, uh, culvert that needs to be replaced down on DD nine lateral six. Uh, Wyndmore Township, section thirty-six, and they're gonna be, we're, working on that tomorrow. Uh, we're working with the FEMA, we're working with FEMA, getting, uh, getting the work that'll be done there, getting that qualified for reimbursement or mowing. Uh, painting of center lines has been completed. Uh, the railroad crossing on P sixty, I don't know if anybody's driven over that. Right to the, uh, east of Wyndmore, uh, there is a panel on that that's in poor condition. I actually communicated with the road master on Sunday. Uh, it was brought to my attention Sunday and we are still communicating with them. That's everything from the roads. From planning and zoning, the moratorium ordinance is being published this week. Uh, next week, we will have the board take the final action. So we'll have a document to record. And that's, and everything that I have.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board here? All right.
I didn't even see Tammy leave.
Thanks Doug.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I appreciate the leave of night.
Yeah.
Um, all right. March, we're here for drainage. We got change order number two for sixty sub four and then pay app one. Those are in our packet and stuff, yeah. Is there any questions from the board? Um, change order two, I can touch on that a little bit. Um, you can see the basically exchange for sixty inch diameter instead of fifty-four. I believe they said they don't make fifty-four, um, for that size of plastic. Um, so that was kinda known when we accepted that bid, that there would be some that would be upsized. Um, then there was the open ditch excavation, which we talked about, which actually is mostly offset by that reducer or that, yeah, reducer that was not needed in that size. So net increase of four hundred and two dollars. So I would make motion to approve the change order number two. Is there a second to that?
One second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Then pay app one is, their work completed to date? Any questions there? Okay, I would move to approve that pay app one for sixty sub four. Is there a second?
One second.
All right. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. And we've got a repair request.
How did you get one for me?
Carter's the lucky one today.
We've got number one oh three in Hancock Passouth twenty-five dash one seven six in the open ditch. And it's just wash out, wash out in the open ditch for Levi Rosenmeyer.
All right, I, I'll move to have the supervisor take care of this repair request. Is there a second?
I'll second.
This was a rare time that me and Roger don't have one. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Um, discussion with our auditor. I think Tammy had a couple of quick notes there. Um, one was about the email Tammy sent the other day with Aaron's two weeks. Um, do we wanna proceed as normal to advertise for that and stuff, or is there any thoughts from the board? Proceed as normal, okay? Um, and then next week, Tammy's gonna talk about the city of Wesley special election and how those costs will be handled, so. I guess there's that. Did you have anything else for March? Didn't think so. Okay. Uh, board discussion, committee reports, anything Jack?
I was supposed to have a challenge yesterday, but Selena sent an email about eight o'clock yesterday morning, said she had a family emergency, so she canceled the meeting.
Okay. Roger?
Just, and Tommy's Windville project might fall over into Cassup County, some of the lines and moving themselves. What we were going to do with that, whatever that's called.
Are they requesting anything, like?
Requesting information, but I have no idea what it is.
What company is that or who contacted?
I don't know. He didn't give the company in the voicemail, so.
Oh, okay.
It's Fortham, Oregon, number. I didn't answer it.
Gotcha. All right, um, anything else Roger?
No, I think.
Okay, Josh?
I know the names.
Carter?
Went to the community conversation with Solar last Tuesday evening out at Iowa Lakes Community College. Um there was a presenter there from Iowa State University and it's kinda interesting to hear different. People's thoughts and disinformation in regards to Solar to understand what, what companies are up for, they were focusing more on the Dwayne Arnold. Um cog and solar project down in Lynn County and uh quite the, quite the operation, but. But anyway, that was more just an educational workshop and then.
Yeah.
Um. When, or last Thursday, I had North Iowa Community Action. And so our total budget, projected income for grant money for the year is eleven million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. Which is up twenty thousand dollars from last year. We have uh changed some insurance and just interesting things to note that. North Iowa Community Action will pay eighty-four percent of single uh health insurance for each employee. And fifty-three to fifty-eight percent of family insurance. Depending on what plan you go with, they do have three different plans. Uh and then we have a twenty-six in per, twenty-six percent increase in our insurance costs this year, which is not uncommon. Um. So we have, we are partially self-funded for insurance, as we talked quite about our insurance during the meeting. Uh we currently have a negative twenty-five thousand dollar balance due to employee turnover. At the beginning of the new fiscal year and, and so that will get better, but. Uh we have a lot, had a lot of employee turnover lately, and then another discussion. Item is that we've only, we only have forty-five um percent attendance. This last meeting and it's not really been any better than that, so looking at how to structure. The board as a whole, uh maybe slimming it down because we haven't had involvement from several counties or just several board members. Um in different areas, private and public and, and supervisor sectors. Um currently, we have twenty-one on our board, but we only are required to have nine, so. Maybe looking to slim that down and I think we did decide to reach out to three or four of them who haven't come in the last couple of years and. And uh see if we can eliminate a few that way. Um approved new contracts for the year and discussed audit report, that was about it.
They have a, like early chat, if you missed that thing, it's either two or three meetings, then you're.
You can be voted off.
Well, yeah, there's, there's lag laws that.
Probably automatic renewal or automatic removal would be better.
I think I heard if you miss three consecutive meetings.
Yeah.
Then you, it's possible you can be eliminated by the board um at the next meeting.
You got something that's more than that.
A lot more than that, yeah, so, yeah. So, yep, um, yeah, that's, I met a couple guys during drainage repairs, that's about it.
All right, um, yeah, I went to the Solar one with Carter too, I. There was, there's pieces of it that were valuable, I think it would have been good if we would have had, um.
More owner involvement?
Well, more involvement all the way around.
Just people in general?
From the board, from the community, from everyone, I mean, there was only probably. Twenty of us there, maybe fifteen?
Maybe, yeah.
And that's probably on the generous side.
And there was only a couple of those that were actually landowners in Acusuth County.
That too.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, Doug was there, Carter and I were there, um. Brian Tool was there from planning and zoning, so I mean, we had probably a third of the room that was. Here with the county, so to speak. Um, and I don't know, I don't remember exactly how we publicized that or got the word out, I don't. I don't know if that was a successful uh communication piece or not, but we did not have that many that attended in general, so. I guess, I know there, as part of his grant and stuff for his work at the university, he has to. Kind of compile all the questions and comments and do research on any of that sort of stuff and then that will be provided to the board. So I think that can be a useful piece of information, but at the same time also. Take it with a grain of salt with the sample size that was represented there, um because it, it was a very small group. But. Um then there's two things we had talked about last week for being on our agenda here. Um this week that were not on the agenda with the TIF hearing date uh for and stuff for the urban renewal. That was not on, cause um Amy was not ready with the information yet, from when she got it till now, it's not ready, so. Hopefully, we will have that next week or soon, but um I believe she's working on that. The other was workshop with, for the emergency response complex. And Todd was not available for that, so we'll have to try and reschedule something where. He can make it and we can get everybody coordinated, so. Those are a couple other highlights I had, so.
Is that somewhere shooting for possibly next week or are we just kinda waiting for Todd?
I, I have not been able to talk to Todd on that, so I don't know, um. Someone needs to coordinate with all the interested parties and we probably need more than a week to schedule it, to be honest. Um that's, for our world, that's a regular meeting, but for some people, their schedules are booked out a little farther than a week, so. Um, we probably need to keep that in mind, um. But that's, I think that, yeah, I mean, I think everything else has been touched on, is there anything else? Anyone has come into mind?
Off to adjourn.
All right, is there a second? Any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, we adjourned at nine seventeen. Thank you, everyone.